Festivities. All right, and we're gonna start, we had the five-year forecast and everything. So, Mr. Tower, I was just gonna tell everybody you're gonna run late, and here you are. Isn't that magic? Yeah, there we go. All right, Taylor Adams, go for it.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. And on behalf of my boss, who would normally recognize me at this point, I would say that we have a, we have a council requested briefing on potential alternative uses of the convention center parking, or convention center and sports center parking. Before I dive into this, I do want to offer one quick, just sort of clarification on, on behalf of staff. I've had a number of questions from, from some of you and from, and some, from some of our council-elect that regarding whether or not there's an intended use on the back end of this, I just want to set the record straight that, that as it relates to what staff is presenting here, as we understand the, the, the request from you all is that that there is not a subsequent action that is contemplated. In fact, you'll see in just a moment, one of our, one of our recommendations here, or potential items for consideration, should this be something that you all decide to do, would be to put a restriction on this potential transfer so that any use other than parking would immediately revert back to, to this group for, they, they, either property would revert back, or that it would come back to you for an immediate ratification of the decision. And so, you're, you're going to see that as a potential item for consideration in a minute, and, and that's been something that you'll remember was part of our briefing from, our closed session, or our initial briefing on this, on this item some, some time ago. But with that, I'll orient you here, you can see our convention center, our sports center, and then three parking lots totaling 685 spaces, 708 spaces, and 992 spaces. The reason that you might, the reason that, that we understand this is coming forward and was requested is, we are approaching the point where the Atlantic Park project is going to close. As soon as that project, and when I say close, I mean that they will secure their financing, and we will be breaking ground on the project. As soon as that happens, the 538 parking spaces that, that make up the dome side as it currently sits, will no longer be available to the public for use, so no longer be part of our parking system because we'll be in active construction on that site. And so, the briefing that you have here today is, is something that, that we were asked to evaluate as to how we would accommodate the absence of those, those spaces, and specifically how we would safeguard the neighborhoods north and south, specifically the neighborhoods that are currently known as the most oft, most commonly known as the Resort Beach Civic League, to the south, Chatelawn, and to the south and west, the Sea-Tac community, from what would be beachgoers trying to park in those neighborhoods, which is all, which is already a, an issue for us and something that, that we, we actually do in parking enforcement. And so, the thought was brought forward, could, could these lots be utilized? And so, currently, these lots are, they're of course owned by the city, they're 2,385 parking spaces, sit on, sit on 31 acres of land, they are zoned oceanfront, they are zoned basically in your, in the OR, Reform-Based Code. They're, they were, they were, this, this land was, was basically acquired in, in segments. The final land acquisition was in April of 2005. I do believe that, that eminent domain was used for that, and that, that was, however, that was prior to the law change requiring land acquisition by eminent domain to be offered back to the landowner before being declared surplus and sold. We, we have, we have here that there is the potential need for parking management, and, and as you can see, prior to, to, to conveyance of, of land to another party by the VBDA, we would recommend, if you were to consider this action, that, that, that council puts some sort of reversion language in here to ensure that the use was only ever for, for parking, and that if it was used for anything, if there was ever an attempt to use it for something other than parking, that it would immediately come back to this body for consideration. Why, why would you potentially do this? As we understand this, this would provide a comprehensive approach to the parking system, it limits, it limits confusion, and the additional 2, 2,300 spaces provide overflow parking. And so, I'll provide a little context on this. The, so, a question I am likely to get, and which I anticipate that I'll get, is, does the Development Authority have to own this property for you to operate it as part of the parking system? I can tell you, we do not. I can just tell you, it has been your custom with a couple, it has been the custom of this body, with a couple of exceptions. Those exceptions would be, an example being the 25th Street and 31st Street parking garages, where there was a public-private partnership with the city that, that impacted that deal. And then, when we look at the rest of the system, the rest of, the rest of your parking system is operated and controlled by the Development Authority. So, there are some efficiencies in operation that, that, that operation by the Development Authority bring to, to the table. However, and this is a big point, that is really on the assumption that you are ready to monetize this parking. So, that's an important thing for me to tell you. In the present, this parking, this parking is available free, free of charge to all conventiongoers and users of the sports center. There are times where that may still be the case. In the event that this were to go to the Development Authority, the, the animating action that you might consider would be, in that space, would be our intention to monetize that and to use the demand pricing skill processes that we have there, as well as, on the enforcement side, to, to, because we have to ensure that this parking would still operate for conventions, that, that we would sometimes be telling people when they had to exit that, so that it, exit those spaces, so that they could be used by the convention center and the sports center. So, there are some, we believe that there are some broader authorities and opportunities that the Development Authority would have, but that is only on the assumption that you would be willing to monetize that. And it's important for me to say at this point, you have not made that policy distinction. And so, that would be, that would be something that we would encourage you can, encourage you to consider. And, and so, we, we are requesting your, we are requesting your direction here. This is, this, again, this is a briefing that came from council's request, and so, we, we really have, have done as, as gone, have gone as far with this and done as much analysis as we can do on this before we understand the will of the broader body. And so, with that, I'm, I'm happy to stop and take any questions. Yes, sir.
Mr. Haney.
I think, I just want to verify, I, I asked the city attorney, and to do this transaction, council will need to send it over to the VBDA if you desire to, and it will take a supermajority vote, so I think that'll take nine council members to do that. And I think the, unless there's some other kind of legislative action, I think any, if this had to be settled, it came back to council, if council even adopt that, that's a sing, that's, is that a majority vote?
Well, if it had a reversion, it would happen automatically as a matter of law.
Okay, but one of the conditions that we're, go back to the condition.
So, so, yeah, and so, boss, thank you for, I should have mentioned, I intended to mention the supermajority piece, you're exactly right. This is land that was acquired for a public purpose, so yes, it would require a supermajority of this body to convey it to the, to the Development Authority. It would be up to you to determine under what terms it would revert, but certainly, the supermajority is something that could be in play at that point.
Okay, Guy.
Thank you, Mayor. Taylor, I'm, have been concerned throughout my tenure here about the absence of wayfinding for parking. How, how close are we to getting wayfinding, and how does this, those transfer play into that? I guess you probably ought to answer it, do, do we have to do the transfer to take full advantage of what our wayfinding plan for parking?
So, if you all told us to do this, and Kathy, correct me if I speak out of turn here, we would most certainly have to expedite, and quickly expedite, our, our wayfinding package for the, for the convention center and sports center campus. Because in addition to this, the only way this would work is, we would also have to do a considerable amount of messaging around public transportation options like Route 34, which is the shuttle that would run around these and back to the primary system at Atlantic and Pacific, and also incorporate a broader use of fee, of freebie in this area, but, and, and recognizing also that, that again, this is, well, as this is going to be a three-year condition while we're in construction on Atlantic Park, we'd have to go quickly. Yes, sir.
Do you, do you anticipate having vehicles enter into the, I mean, transit-type vehicles enter into the parking area to pick people up, park their cars, to take them to beach front events and, and places?
Councilmember, we think so, but it's important for, for me to note at this point, we've done no formal design on any sort of system changes that would be needed to accommodate this, because we did not know your will.
Well, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to see that here, if it's not, but I just want to express my absolute enthusiasm to make it a positive, or concern, if you want to look at it in the negative, that we don't have that system in place now, that it should incorporate all the garages that we share or operate fully. And I realize it's a big project, but I think it's absolutely vital, both to getting people to hotels and restaurants and other events at the beach, but also for the people, local folks, it's a big, it's a big part of solving the problem, I think. It's gonna take some investment, I realize that, but I would just urge council to follow up and make sure that investment gets made. It's not the only feature of transfer, this transfer that you're proposing, I realize that, but I just want to flag it.
Yes, sir.
From one who's lived in that beach area a long time, and I really, I do, I do think it's a vital need for residents, visitors, everybody needs it. Thank you.
John in Lynnwood.
Couple of questions. First of all, why is it a prerequisite to monetize parking if that was a desire, that you'd have to transfer the property? We certainly can either into a lease, where we lease the property to the Development Authority for a time certain, since clearly, when you look at the memorandum from the manager, it's very clear that operating 31 acres of surface parking is not the long-term objective, or it wouldn't have that sense structure in there, syntax, about transferring to someone else, and that's not to operate parking lots, it's for something else. And, and so, first of all, so what precludes us, since this is, we wouldn't be tying this up for 40 years, what would preclude us, and knowing that within our CIP, to monet, to do a lease for the Development Authority, to operate that for a period of six years or 10 years with an option, like we have done with parking for the Skunover Hotel, to be the example? What would preclude that?
That, I don't think there, I don't think that would, anything would preclude that, councilmember, if that was, if that was your will.
Okay, so there isn't anything requires us to transfer the property to get the monetization or to get integrated parking managed?
Yes, sir, and, and, and I'm looking at Dana's, lease works? Lease works?
My other question is, getting back to, I don't know, the current structure in the memo, it's, I know it takes nine votes, I've been down that road many times. So, I know it takes nine votes to transfer the property, but what it's, once it's transferred, you made the reference that council could insert into the agreement, that that might not be part of the nine vote to transfer, I don't know, that could also obligate a future council to a term that they could, I've always been told we can't obligate future councils, and they can change agreements. So, if we condition something, nothing would prevent a simple majority from, from removing the condition, is that not correct?
I don't know the answer to that. Mark?
I, I think it's just a simple majority, unless, although we've had, we've had, for example, public property, you know, when we transferred property to the Development Authority, and we have conditioned any changes to that, the, on, on being a nine-vote supermajority, that's contractual, the law doesn't, the law would not require it unless it's by contract.
I'm, I saw the issue with the arena comes to my mind, because obviously, if that had been fulfilled, but there were conditions that we made, that after the property was transferred to the third party, conditions could be modified and be removed by a simple vote. So, my only point is, the only thing that's really charter-bound, and beyond the ability of a future council to change without nine votes, is the actual, and we can't force the Development Authority to give it back.
Well, you could put a reversion in it, it's, it automatically comes back, but, but you are correct in your statement that the constitutionally required, and statutorily required, supermajority vote is for the alienation of the property, for this, for the initial conveyance of the property. Everything after that is a matter of contract and can typically be handled by six votes.
Yep, okay, I just want to make sure that we understood, on fronters, so the added value, since ultimately, if we're gonna be developing it down the road, if we wanted to maximize not just this council, but the councils who sit here in the future, to be in control of what happens, we would go a lease route versus transfer the property. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor.
Getting back to our parking shortfall situation, once Atlantic Park gets underway, is it possible for us to suspend some of our ordinances regarding parking, temporary parking lots, and things of that nature, activate as much public parking opportunities as we can at the resort? I remember that gentleman up at 32nd Street and Atlantic Avenue, that we wouldn't let him operate because he only had a one-year temporary lot. Can we suspend those while we go through this couple, two, three-year period of losing all these spaces? I think every space has got to be up for a consideration.
Councilmember, that's, I hate to shoot from the hip on that, but, but that is certainly something we could study and report back on, and Kathy, we could pull that together pretty quickly, couldn't we? We can pull that together and be ready with a report. Yes, sir.
I think that's a good idea. Does everybody agree that's, that we should take right now? Yeah, Barbara?
I'm very, 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 very reluctant to convey.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just let it be known, if you're counting votes, if we can achieve it through a lease, I think that would be the way to do it. I, I just think we have to protect your actions.
I'd take nine votes as well. That will take nine votes as well.
Do a lease. Yeah. Mm-hmm. A lease doesn't take nine votes, it's just limited duration, and if it's gonna be for more than, you have to have a public hearing, and if it's gonna be for more than five years, you have to have a bid process.
Okay, I guess, you know, what's the thoughts about Lynnwood's thing? Guy?
I just, I'm gonna go back, I want to ask the specific question, Taylor, back on my wayfinding issue.
Yes, sir.
Is there any reason on this conveyance versus non-conveyance? I'm neutral on that, unless it adversely affects this wayfinding issue, I might have a different opinion. Is it, are you telling me you don't think it makes a difference, a conveyance issue on city implementing a wayfinding system?
No, sir, we would treat the wayfinding system as something sep, as a separate and distinct project. What I can tell you is, if we're to, if we're to leverage this, this parking field, however, for a more intense use than is currently on it, that would most certainly expedite our need for the wayfinding, whether that's conveyed, basically, whether the property is conveyed, you know, in perpetuity, or if it's a lease, we would still need to expedite that work.
Thank you.
Okay, Lynnwood, once again, reiterate your thoughts on this, you know, in terms of moving, okay, Patrick?
Yeah, I think what councilmember Branch is asking for, we can do, separate and apart from this conveyance, they.
Okay.
Yes, two separate, it's two distinct things from my understanding of what he's asking for.
Yes, sir.
But if council is interested, or more interested in, in a lease for it, is that something that you want to consider at a later date?
Yeah, Lynnwood.
So, and the purpose, once again, once again, is to monetize these lots?
I wouldn't say to monetize it, sir. I think primarily for us, it's just understanding the fact that we're bringing off so many, we're taking off so many parking spots because of the Atlantic Park project moving towards closing.
Right.
This may allow for a more efficient, and as Mr. Moss mentioned and Taylor mentioned, it doesn't have to happen this way, but it'll be for a more efficient administratively way of managing it, as having it all as one cohesive system. And a lease sounds like it works for that, if council's okay and amenable to that.
Because I think the monetizing bears more discussion, particularly at the RAC Subcommittee level, because I haven't heard a thing about it.
That's right, and Mayor Mass, may I ask the city attorney a question?
Oh, you sure can.
Mark, is it safe to say that whatever action, whether it's lease or conveyance, would require a public hearing, or no, that's not true?
Well, certainly, any sale requires a public hearing, and any lease over a period of five years requires a public hearing. Yes, either one of those would require a public hearing.
And Taylor, can you clip, Mayor, can I?
Yes, please.
Taylor, how long is the projected construction for the project, or before the parking structures for the Atlantic Park project, once closed, is, how long is that construction supposed to take?
Well, well, we know that, that phase one is, that what we're working on now is at minimum three years, and then we anticipate three years of stabilization on the other side of that.
Yeah.
My only thoughts are about the length of the lease, I think, well, that's a factor, the other factor needs to be, when we look at relative to our debt service, and what the implicit, or at least inferred, public-private partnership or structural parking, replace what we have in its cost of two pays, where in our timeline of our debt servicing requirement, because we didn't have any big increase in that over the six-year period, where does that, where's that window of opportunity, and that timeline, that lease, you'd anticipate that, you know, it could be option here, so you could extricate yourself if need be, but if you're thinking about it, when would you, because obviously, that one proposal was to build housing on top of parking, right? So, that has a big implication and a whole bunch of discussions, so it wouldn't be happening probably in that six-year period of time, but if I just heard you talking about stabilization, so I think your lease should anticipate where that window is, and set it with an option, and then, the longer the programmatic pieces, the stability, then you have more time to deal with the short-term issue of parking, and the longer, which will have a lot of public participation in that question.
Okay, first, Mayor.
So, would you mind walking me through this a little bit? If we do the lease, you know, what's the vote requirement, and what's the process of public hearings, vote, all of that sort of thing?
If you're going to do a lease for greater than five years, you can only do it up to 40, but it, from five to 40, you have to have a public hearing, over five years, you have to have a bid process, so someone else would be able to come in and bid, offer a competing bid, and then you have to have a public vote to award, but that vote to award is a simple majority vote.
Well, I thought, you know, that, supermajority as well. Thank you.
Okay. Are we okay to at least, you know, move forward with, you know, exploring the lease for us, I get, this is what we're talking about?
Yeah, so Mayor, I think, then Taylor, clarify, if this is not where you want to go with this. I think if we could possibly bring this back to council for your review and consideration, with a shout-out to exceed a five years with an optional renewal period, we'd love to bring that forward for council to consider.
Yeah, I think that's the direction we should go, does everybody agree with that?
So, so, yeah, we, I think, Mayor, we got a sense of what to do, we'll, we'll, we'll regroup and put some stuff together. Okay.
As well, do some research as it relates to that, and then get an answer to Mr. Tower about the wayfinding stuff.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. Yes, so, get ready to move on to our next order of business. Guy, are we ready for?
I think so.
Yeah?
I think we're ready as well.
Yeah, come on, Phil, we're not letting you sit that long, my goodness.
I know, that's great. Oh, it's already set up.
Mayor, welcome to the office.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. It's nice to be here. I appreciate you all making time for me today, and I've spoken generally with Mr. Tower about this presentation, and it's similar to a presentation that I made about 11 months ago. And this deals with the Business Professional Occupational License Tax, which is commonly known as BPO. It is, the, the issue today that I wanted to talk about is that, go to the first slide, second slide, please, is that the BPO tax is a calendar year tax, and while the city operates on a fiscal year of June 30, this is a January-through-December calendar year tax. In December of 21, I presented a similar proposal that city council voted against, acting on BPO tax adjustment for the 2022, the current license year, but instead, voted to, on a substitute motion to defer the issue for consideration in the FY23 budget. The FY23 budget was concluded without consideration for this particular tax. I will mention that there were two other issues that I brought up, that were not time-sensitive to being active on January 1, and one was tax relief for senior and disabled taxpayers on personal property, and the council did act on that and provide that relief. And another was one on tax avoidance, if you will, or suspension of the first two years of the business tangible property tax on businesses, and council did act on that. As a side note, Ms. Wilson, Vice Mayor Wilson, had initiated a similar action about 10 years ago with a program we call BLIP, Business License Incentive Program, where it suspended the business license tax on any new business for the first two years. And I'll make some mention of that later in this, this brief presentation. So, for the background, number three, for the background, Virginia Beach BPO tax rates have remained at the maximum levels allowed by the state for 44 years, since 1978. They're all at the max. Virginia Beach's BPO tax thresholds have remained at the minimum levels allowed by the state for 25 years, since 1997. In fact, in 1997, the state concluded a study and passed what was called a Uniform Ordinance under the, under the action of Governor Allen, he was, you know, most people like to talk about how the BPO tax is a gross receipts tax, and it was instituted long ago, and the like, that it's an encumbrance to business. It is a primary source of discovery for localities on all their local taxes, meals, lodging, admission, and so forth. But if it was reduced from a gross tax to a net tax, you would, he would decimate the tax, and quite frankly, most of the small businesses wouldn't have the accounting power to write off all of the gross receipts they have. So, it is, it's seen as a, a practical and reasonable tax, but there are certain ways that you can deal with it. So, under this Uniform Ordinance, there were three tenets. One was to unburden small businesses, and so, that provided for a $40 license for anybody up to 25,000 in receipts, and also a $50 license for anybody between 25,000 and 100,000. Another tenet was uniformity with statewide guidelines. So, if you had a business and you had it, one located in Winchester, and another in Virginia Beach, and another in Roanoke, you had a reasonable expectation that the local tax assessor was gonna treat you in a similar way. And if not, the third tenant would come in, a process for appeals of local determinations by local commissioners of the revenue. So, all three of those were adopted by the state, and the city of Virginia Beach City Council quickly adopted them as well. For a little context, in 2012, city council adopted this BLIP, Business License Incentive Program, and while it helped, Virginia Beach is still experiencing an annual net loss of 501 businesses. For most of the time I've been commissioner, we'd have a little over 400 businesses come in and register every month, and about the same, check out, go out of business. But we've had a real net loss since 2012 of 500, and on average, 501 businesses a year. Last December, when I asked for that increase in the minimum BPO tax threshold from 100,000 to 300,000, that would have restored the balance of qualifying businesses to 73%. In short, historically, in the, there have been about three-quarters of the businesses that have qualified for a minimum license of $50 or less. So, I'm asking the council to consider such an adjustment in 20, for the 2023 business license year, and I think that there's some strong reasons for y'all to consider this at this time. Air Pier benchmark localities like Chesterfield County and Henrico are way ahead of us on this, their threshold is 400,000. This is a, a report from way ahead of us on this. Their threshold is 400,000. This is a report from counties and cities reporting to the Weldon Cooper Center at the University of Virginia on ones with thresholds greater than 100,000. You can see there eight, and the cities and counties are listed along the left margin. You can see that Chesterfield County was at 300,000, Prince William at 250,000, and Spotsylvania at 750,000. Since 2018, Chesterfield is now at 400, Henrico is at 400, Prince William is at one-half a million, and Spotsylvania is at a million dollars. They pay a minimum license. Number six, some more context. Like I said, in 2016, 73% of all businesses qualified for this minimum B-Pole tax. In 2021, that percentage is down to 64%. So we've moved from three-quarters to two-thirds. Now, Mr. Moss is moving close, and I want, I want you to help me with this analysis. And if my math is off, I've been corrected by the best. I'll just look at it that way. But in this spreadsheet, there are three golden banners across there. And last year, when I came to you and asked for your consideration on the $300,000 threshold, the vice mayor had asked, well, what about 200,000? And, you know, I did not give her an instant answer, and I don't think that she was happy with, you know, not getting an instant answer. And so I wanted to be prepared this time, because I think that you certainly deserve some choices. But my reasoning at that time was that I, I wanted to focus on the three-quarter history. So the long and the short is if you adjust the rate up from 100,000 to 200,000, we'll get about 70% of the businesses there. At 250,000, we'll get about 72%. And at 300,000, we'll get to that historic level of right around 75% or 74%. The revenue impact for each one is itemized in the third from the last column. The average benefit to taxpayers in those groups is, for instance, from 100 to 200,000, the average taxpayer is going to save $418. If you go up to 250,000, the average taxpayer between 200 and 250 is going to save 645, and so on. I'll let that marinate for a little while. Does anybody have any particular questions on this, or?
Rosemary, and then John.
So you may have it up there, but I'm having trouble.
I understand.
Seeing all of the numbers. So I'm trying to remember, I sort of take my Rolodex backwards to last December, and I think the number for the 300,000 was 2.3 million, but.
It was just under, it was just over 2 million, excuse me, but not 2.3. Kevin was.
I was close for.
2.2.
2.2, there you go. I was.
Pretty good.
Pretty good. So, so what is the loss in revenue at the $200,000 mark?
1,059,000. 1,060,000. At the two and a half, it's 1,505,000. And this, this year, it would be a little less. At 300,000, it would be 1.9 million, 1.2 million.
It's about half.
Yeah, it's about half. And if you look in the, the second column, you'll see the amount of numbers. Right now, we've got about 20,000 businesses that, that enjoy it. We would get another 20, 200 if we move it to 200,000. We would get an additional 700, 690, if you will, if we move it to 250, an additional 7, 570, moving up.
The question would be, in this region.
Yes, ma'am.
Other than Richmond or Northern Virginia, other than Chesapeake, what are the other cities doing?
Chesapeake for, pretty much since the, since it was available, has moved their threshold to 200,000. Around the region, there are different, they, they've dealt with the rates a lot differently. For instance, Norfolk has a very low rate for freight forwarders. We could, we could get in a rate war trying to get a particular industry group to come to us or keep them with us. But the essence of this request is that not only inflation, but the economic environment has made it harder for smaller independent businesses to make it. I'm not talking about COVID particularly at this time. Take into account that with inflation, your B-Pole revenues are going to be much higher next year, because the 23 business license year is based on the 22 calendar year gross receipts. So we know inflation has pushed that up. Now, you know, y'all are dealing with the same element as a city trying to budget for it. But when we've lost this essence of being able to be at about three-quarters of businesses being able to get in and start up without being hit with several thousand or several hundred-dollar tax annually, it does a couple of things. It helps them get settled. It helps them survive, and it's easier to administer. It's not that we don't audit them and go back and confirm those receipts, but we can move those applications through online, not in line, as I like to say.
Doesn't answer my question.
I'm sorry.
If you could give us what the other cities are, what they're.
I'll give you, I can give you a handout of that.
For me, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
And do you want to define that as South Side, or you're, or all of, up to Williamsburg, or do you want to?
Planning District. Planning District.
Okay, I'll do the Planning District. The reason I pointed to this is this is a statewide issue. And if you look back on the last slide, if you'll go back to number five, Chesterfield and, and Henrico have very similar business demographics and, and economic demographics to us. And that's, they've been kind of the tell for us to play off of each other, if you will. Some of the Northern Virginia localities, I, I do think they're dealing with a different set of elements than we are. But you can see even Halifax and others, it's, it's, the threshold is one of those things that makes it easier on the independent when they're competing against a chain restaurant, or a, a chain service, or even a, a chain retail. It makes it easier on them. And that's, that's the push for this. The last question, the last.
John wants to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First of all, I liked this the first time I saw it and supported it. I like it just as much now. But I, but I do agree that the pricing power of small businesses in inflationary environment is not the same as bigger businesses. And therefore, it really means they're absorbing by reducing their margin to stay in business. So my point is, the approach we took before, I think, requires a more aggressive response than we were thinking about in the past. We know we had overperforming revenues, school and city combined, just sort of funding formula, of over 55 million dollars. And that's structurally built in, that unanticipated growth in revenue was built into our baseline budgets, which we yet didn't have expenses for. So my question is, on the universe of businesses, you said how many business license, how many businesses are in this universe?
I'm thinking, I, I've been saying 28, but it's probably a little less than that, 28,000, 27,000 now.
And if you had to say, what number of businesses really account for, say, 85% of the revenue that you collect?
Well, most of the revenue comes from businesses of a million dollars and more.
Okay, so if we were.
Seventy-seven percent.
The reason why I'm asking, I'm, I'm looking at this threshold of 300,000. I've always thought, why couldn't we be like colonial Hong Kong before the communists took over, where it was easy to start a business and just small businesses thrive? You could start a business in a day and be a business in Hong Kong. That would be a goal to be, have your small business operational in a day and rely on transactional revenues rather than this approach, because they're still paying those revenues, right? They stay in business. My advice would be, I would push this higher than this, to send a better signal that we are empathetic with the, the structure that small businesses have. That's its own word-of-mouth advertising, I think, my own view. It's a brand advertising. And we have growth in revenue that would allow us to, maybe it's not without, I'm not saying it's easy, Mr. City Manager, but it certainly can be done relative to the message that it's sending about the situation, just like families. I could easily support a half a million. I'd support this 300,000. We might not be the ones making that decision. I expect my fellow colleagues out here watching will be. But I think that this is where the biggest job growth is, and this is who inflation is impacting the most. And I think we should try to stretch that number as much as we can. And if we can find more margin in the budget to do that higher, we should be really looking at, and I think we should talk to the universe of these small businesses we're talking about and better understand their stress point, and what is the rate that makes a difference? Does $50 keep them in business or not? Probably not. But better understanding the stress point that would make, rather than making, oh, we've reduced it, but did we get an effect?
I experience a stress point every year.
Do. Well, I'm just thinking, I, I would be, and I can only speak for my own view and talk in small business, that we could, we should look to see if we couldn't push that higher and provide more relief to small businesses. That's my observation.
Thank you, Guy.
I, I agree with everything that Councilman Moss just said, with one possible exception, that is, putting, putting it to our colleagues to be here, this is a calendar year tax. So, and, you know, we booted it already once to the budget. It got booted again. I'd very much like to see this done this year before, not, I have no interest in credit, has nothing to do with that. I just want to get it on the books so that we can have it in effect for the year. Otherwise.
I'm all in favor. I'll just consult with my colleagues as to what they think.
There's one more slide, and we can come back to this if anybody has any additional questions. Number seven, and my chief deputy put this one together. He not here to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fly with this as best I can.
Is that Eric sitting in the back there?
Oh, I didn't see him. Okay. Well, the sage, the sage of, the sage of the first floor is down there. But anyway, we've got calendar year revenue listed from 1998 to 22, and the percentage increase. And over that period of time, the calendar year revenue, which coincides with the license year, has been almost 4%. We have fiscal year revenue, and it, it only runs from 2005 forward, because when we went off the mainframe, we, we lost that, that information. However, we started maintaining a productivity report in 2004, 2004, and this allowed us to start compiling this information in a fiscal year manner. That's showing just from 2005, just under 3% growth. The Consumer Price Index since 1998 has been at 2.23%. So the revenue has, has grown. And I'm, I know that the city has budgeted and anticipated for that growth, but I, I think the bottom line is that it's out of whack. We, we, for, for most of the last 25 years, it's, or, excuse me, most of the last 20-plus years, it's been at about 74, 75%. And now we're, three, three out of four businesses were qualifying for a minimum license. Now that's fallen out to 63, 63, 64%, which is just under two-thirds. I'd like to see it get back to that. I think that it would help small businesses, and I, I really do think that this is something that, with the growth we're going to see in this revenue, not just from inflation, but the hit that people are going to have paying for their 2023 license, we're going to create a friction point that it's going to be, if not now, when. So I, I'll leave it with this last quote, and this was something for somebody I know that many of you remember. He was a crackerjack budget analyst and very thorough person. Paul Harris included this passage in one of his reports. Currently, the city is fully empowered to address the emerging business landscape and changing climate by creating new subclasses for businesses. We've done that. Reducing tax rates in any classification or subclassification, or installing thresholds to reduce the tax on any business type. So this, I'm proposing thresholds as a manner to provide relief to small businesses and bring it back in line with their tradition of three out of four are at that level.
Hey, Glenn Wood.
Guy, we'll have a separate question of Mr. Callum about the integrity of our government. And you were recently involved in a campaign that put out flyers that said that our city had $45 million for an undisclosed site acquisition that would benefit a preferred developer, shady backroom deals, and cronyism, which is the appointment of friends and associates to positions of authority without proper regard to their qualifications. Do you stand by those assertions, or are they wrong?
Why am I being asked about those assertions?
That campaign, sir.
No, I wasn't.
Just take those down the first day, and you did not.
Mr. Branch, I.
Stand by those or not?
I, I had nothing to do with the development of those. No, I did not.
All right, sir. Thank you for the record.
But they were, they were placed in their public record, and you were certainly able to respond to them. And I didn't see you respond publicly to them.
You dumped them the last part of the campaign. I found it outrageous that these type of unfounded charges are part of campaigns in our city. And I hope we do something about it in the future, or it will happen to one of you.
Hey, John.
My only question is, I don't think, and I know Dana, I think I saw him in the back, my trusted advisor on issues. I don't think any of these changes would reach the 1% threshold that would require a public hearing, because he seemed to be way below that number. But I would just like to confirm that that's true.
Thank you very much, Dana.
So you would need to find offsets?
Yeah, in terms of we make an adjustment, and I guess that since it's calendar year, there would be some impact in the current budget year. I don't believe it reaches the threshold, but I just wanted to be reminded if it did.
Yes, you are correct. The 2 million under consideration here is substantially less than 24 million. That would tick the, the 1%.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Danny.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, council moves in this direction, too. The offset would also need to be on the school side as well, Dana?
That's correct.
46%.
Yeah, 46%. It's up to 2 million, 46%.
Okay, Guy.
Could I ask when we can get this scheduled, if we go forward with a?
We only have two more meetings, so.
I'm aware of that. I'm asking when we can get it. Next meeting?
If council desires it, we can put it on the agenda next year.
I'm with the coast park for the sixth, and we can always take it to the. I'd like to get it on, on the calendar. That's what I'm asking.
Let's open it up for discussion. But, you know, what's the feeling of the body? Sabrina?
I, I supported it last time. I believe I was co-sponsor at that time. I was supportive again.
Can I make the recommendation, at least we move forward, get it on the agenda, and that, you know, then we'll have the discussions. And if any glitches come along the way, that, you know, we'll react accordingly. Would that be fair?
So we're going to go for the sixth, so we can, if we have a glitch, we have the 13th to fix it before the calendar expires.
Mr. Mayor, that's my understanding. Similar to last year, when this came up, we're going to send, we're going to dust off that memo we sent, and we're going to send it to y'all. Just y'all, just some council approaches it eyes wide open, and then we'll put it on the, we'll put it on the sixth.
Process be judicious. I know, it, it, you know, it's great on the thing, but once again, we just got to find out that if there are implications with this whole board, or if there's any other things that we got to know about, let's at least find out about it. But I think, you know, even if we put it on the agenda, it'll, it'll always be open for, let's all agree that we're open for suggestion with an open mind.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
I suppose the issue is what rate we're going to have, whether it's going to be 200,000 or 250 or 300 or so. Are you just saying that we're going to have the option at that point, or?
Well, my thought, and Dana would correct me, the number gets the issue on the, the council could make it less or more, and that would be part of the, I'm sure we'll never get to 24 million. So I don't think we're precluded. But maybe he's going to tell us that we can't go higher than what we advertised, and we just need to fund, put an upper limit on it, if that's the case.
So the easy part is the thresholds. The hard part's getting the offsets, memorializing the ordinance. So I think we could prepare for three versions. Outside of that, I think we need more direction. we need more direction.
I suggest 200, 300, 500, and then we could get the impact, and then we could choose.
Second?
Okay. And just for the record, Dana was sitting next to the deputy who that's not here.
Look right through him, I guess that's... Thank you all. Thank you for your consideration.
Hey, moving on, the Hive VB Business Resource Center and Talent Innovation. How you doing?
Wonderful. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Vice Mayor, council member. So, as you all know, the city back in 2018 conducted a disparity study. And one of those, one of the recommendations made out of the study was to create a Virginia Beach swim office to support small women and minority businesses, along with the disabled, service-disabled veterans businesses to contracting. So, to support those efforts, in particular, the small businesses, sorry, to support those efforts in particular, and the small businesses and startups as a whole, the Department of Economic Development has opened the Hive in August 2021. And we've been privileged to lead the Hive on behalf of the city. So, basically, our mission is, so the Hive is a business resource center designed to promote an innovative and entrepreneurial ecosystem in the city, and serving small businesses in socially and economically disadvantaged communities. At the Hive, we're offering one-on-one consulting, training programs with certifications, different workshops, procurement assistance, capital formation, and so on. We serve new entrepreneurs, existing businesses wanting to grow and thrive, individuals looking for new skills or upskills, new interns into the Virginia Beach community, international small businesses new to the U.S. and the city, existing military service members, and home-based businesses. So, to provide those services, we rely on our business resource partners. Today, we count over 60 of them. And they're the ones that offer those business resources. And they're mostly from, they're either from regional, state, federal agencies, they're financial, educational institutions, or non-exclusive small businesses. And we have some of them that have an office presence at the Hive, like the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, the Virginia Beach Swim Business Office, the State Small Business and Supplier Diversity Agency. Every Tuesday, we have SCORE. Wednesdays, we have PTAC, Virginia PTAC, and Operation Hope that partnered with Falcon Forward every Mondays and Thursdays. So, those are the different resources that we assist, that we offer the assistance on. So, it could be like several items, basically, to support all startup and existing businesses. And we're continuing to raise the Hive profile within the business, the small business communities. To date, we have offered about 170 workshops, training, and events at the Hive. We have attended 19 events outside with an exhibit table, and we have offered assistance to 60 on the one-on-one, either to startups or existing businesses. Every month since August, we develop a newsletter, and it's a great one, especially live, because it includes all like the heritage month. We highlight a resource partner. We highlight a small business. We have all the events and workshops that are offered during the month with live links for registration, and also all available grants and zero-interest loans that are offered in the states. So, next, also been tasked with the workforce attraction and development, and we've been working on that. And as you are all aware, all industries continue to cite the inability to attract and retain a quality workforce as a top concern. So, we've been looking at different talent pool for our talent attractions. We're looking at international recruitment, maybe opening an office of economic development to recruit international. We're also targeting international students that are attending universities in the states of Virginia. There are about 7,000 of them. And green card holders, refugees. For domestic recruitment, we're doing a big marketing campaigns for talent attraction to our city. And we also big target on exiting military service members. So, we've been meeting with businesses across industries and listening to their needs, and we hope to tend to their needs. We're looking at new programs to bring to the area that are very, very new to the area. From the Manufacturing Institute, we have the Federation of Advanced Manufacturing, for advanced manufacturing education. They have, they have about 12, they have 37, sorry, 37 chapters in 12 states. And the only one, the only existing one in Virginia is in central Virginia, in Richard Blend College. Offers a great program, five semesters program, of course, a partnership with the manufacturing industries. And they work three days and go to school for two days and graduate with an associate degree, and also with an advanced manufacturing, advanced manufacturing technician. Also, Heroes Make America, new to the area, building connections between our military and manufacturing industries. The Manufacturing Skill Standards Council, also training assessment site. We were looking for an authorized site, and TCC does have one. They have started the process about three, four years ago, but never followed up, so we're taking up on that. And for two programs to have CPT and CLT. Gen Edge also offers a variety of services to our manufacturing industry. And we had, we use the case expounding, put them into good use by stealing two great partnerships, and one of them being with Virginia Wesleyan University. The program has been so successful that city council, you have funded the program these years, and it's really like, it's a wonderful, great program. So, we offer different training classes. Could be entrepreneurship, could be cybersecurity, could be supply chain management, project management. And for the next one, we're working with the Virginia Wesleyan to offer more certifications, mostly and targeting cybersecurity. Hampton Roads Workforce Council has a permanent office at the Hive, so we've been working on a lot of different things, from hiring, and mostly like with, with small businesses and different companies in the city. So, they offer different programs. Tidewater Community College, we focus on the offshore wind and augmented reality welding trainings and workshops, and they also offer the different other scale tray, supply chain logistics, and CDL. Transition Overwatch is a military apprenticeship program, also new. They have started a hub in Austin and in San Francisco, and hopefully very soon, we'll launch one in the city of Virginia Beach. The good thing about this program is it starts like 12 months before transitioning, so all the training is there. And then, once they seal a partnership with a company, they start their 12-month apprenticeship. Scale Up USA is very good with all the big federal markets, with the JOBS Act and investment and the CHIPS Act. So, we have sealed an MOU with Scale Up, and they basically like, it's a federal contracting accelerator to help our businesses and city employers win and execute federal government opportunities. And finally, Virginia Tech Solutions for Hiring Events. Some of our great partners, Hispanic Chambers, we're also doing a lot with that community and reaching out to them. The Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce, Workforce GPS. We're promoting Virginia values, veterans, and congratulation on the city renewing its certification. So, we're really promoting that because there are several military programs that would benefit our employers and the Adult Learning Center. Oops. And here's some pictures of our events, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions? A very great presentation. And the other thing is, I don't know if you haven't been down there, go take a look at this place. You know, when we talk about developing business and being inclusive, and, you know, just wanting small businesses to, you know, survive and grow, you know, this is what it's all about. We have demonstrated that. Sabrina, you requested this?
Yes.
Please.
And before, I do apologize. I do want to acknowledge my colleague, Autumn Bailey, who can be here with us today. She's been great assisting me with this great program. Thank you.
Actually, I was going to say, Eson, thank you very much for the presentation. I have also want to thank council for supporting the recommendation to have such a resource in the city. The Hive is a jewel to the city of Virginia Beach, and it is a lifeboat to entrepreneurs, small business owners who need guidance and support. The Hive, Eson, Autumn Bailey, they are doing yeoman's work. Oftentimes, when I'm there, I see that there are folks who are always coming in to training, requesting support, whatever the need is, the staff has been instrumental in supporting and helping them. And specifically, I say under the leadership of Eson, I've seen a huge turnaround. And just promoting the Hive, because at one point, folks didn't know it was there. And so, under her leadership, under Autumn Bailey, I've seen a huge turnaround. I've seen people really knowing or coming by, being interested in the Hive, and actually getting support. And I hear a lot of good stories, testimonies from entrepreneurs and business owners who come for resources. There also is an opportunity to really not only help a wide array of business owners and entrepreneurs, but specifically our veteran entrepreneurs who are transitioning out of the military. These individuals are starting businesses, and they want to start businesses, and they just need support. They need funding. They need guidance. And so, we have a huge opportunity to support them in that effort. What I would say as an ask is to, for the staff to be fully staffed. They need at least one other FTE to ensure that they're running smoothly and able to support the community and the yeoman's work that they're doing. So, please keep that in mind as we're looking at other budgeting items. We do want to make sure, last I checked, there was a FTE needed to be support and to fully be staffed, or staffed that organization, or that center. So, thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for being a champion for entrepreneurs and small businesses in this city. I appreciate the work.
Councilmember, thank you so much for the kind words about the team at the Hive. I couldn't agree more. And truly do appreciate the leadership that Eson has brought to the center and the work that Autumn has done as well. And I also want to thank you for your support, specifically for the additional resources needed for the facility. Just to confirm, under Mr. Dehaney's leadership, we're already working with the team in budget management services to create, to stand up the Hive as a separate division. That's already been drafted and should be in front of you as a service level three request in the budget. Of course, we understand that you all have a wealth of other opportunities to evaluate, but we're excited to advance that for your consideration. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? You know, if I could, you know, give Caloradans a shout out. Number of years ago, you know, I was still with the Minority Business Council, and Hampton University did a study and found out that a lot of swim businesses had difficulty, they had a barrier to success. And, you know, Del Cino, you were there at the time, and, you know, that, you know, folks didn't have the capacity to do a lot of the work. And Taylor really took on the lead about starting the Contractors Institute. We got the bond reduction going. We started bundling and allowed joint things, and strategies in place that opened the doors for everybody. So, you know, once again, Taylor, thanks to you, even back in the day when you were just in procurement, in terms of getting the ball rolling and helping to create those opportunities. And guess what? Our best days are coming. Del Cino?
Yes, thanks, councilmember, for being a champion for this. Certainly, I'm on board with this. Been, being a small business owner myself, I hope we also incorporate tracking those businesses that we're assisting, so we can show the growth and show the metrics and show that return on investment of those taxpayer dollars. That's so important to, really, this is not the time to be humble, just to show that kind of success. And I commend you and your team for your advocacy and for the success you've already had, but to really come back and drill a little deeper in terms of the growth of those agencies, the success from them interacting with you and your resources, and how that's helped them to grow. Particularly, you piqued my interest with those who need assistance with federal contracts. So, that's still fertile ground. So, just whatever you need there, I really appreciate the tremendous effort. And kudos on the expo, was well done, very successful. And to those who were awarded for their advocacy of small minority-owned businesses. And thank you again, councilmember Wooton, for your support and championing this great cause.
Quite the buzz. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Keep those ribbon cutting is coming.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it's now time for Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm the council. I'm Director Bob Hawke. We will update on the coming for council on December 6th and December 13th.
Boy Scout commitment, so don't take that as an offense to your presentation, Mr. Tahaw.
Understood, sir.
I'll tell you where I'm going to be. You can join me.
I know. It's already been a very, a long day for the council, so I'll try to briefly go through the pending planning items for December 6th and December 13th. On December 6th, we have six items that will be heard by the city council. Item number one is at 11173rd Street, which is a subdivision variance to create, to resubdivide two lots into two more equally subdivided lots. This item was continued from the May 17th and subsequently the August 9th agendas to allow... to allow staff time to discuss with the representatives of the North End Civic League their concerns with the regulations in the existing overlay district, which may potentially affect this application. After initial discussions in September where staff requested feedback from the Civic League, staff received recent correspondence from the North End Civic League, uh, representatives last week. And again, the applicant is proposing to re-subdivide two lots along 73rd Street that were legally created by deed in 1949. Right now there are two lots that exist that are 30 feet wide. One is 30 foot wide and the other is 50 foot wide. And the applicant's proposing to subdivide the two lots into 50 foot wide lots, uh, into two 40 foot wide lots. The applicant is proposing to develop the site with two single family homes. Uh, the property is, uh, zoned for an ability to build two duplexes on the two existing lots right now, but realistically probably three units at this time. These are the proposed elevations for the proposed lots. At the time, there were two speakers in support, uh, one speaker in opposition, which represented the Civic League, uh, with a concern for precedent setting and preferring to, uh, separate development, uh, under the existing regulations that could be accomplished in the North End Overlay District. There were also 10 letters of support and one letter of opposition, uh, that was received by staff.
Well, I don't have a question. I'm just going to, um, remind everybody that the purpose of this deferral was to have a North End Committee work on potential alternatives to the two choices that, that they had. And we have not gotten that report back. So I would like to have that to see what they've come up with. So I'm anticipating a deferral on this until we can get that. But I think you've tried to reach out to them and Bobby, you told me today that, uh, that I can help you with that and I'll do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branch.
Is that deferral then to, to the 13th? They have until the 13th to come to an agreement or?
I've got, I've got to see what it is.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
They had a report between now and 6.
They had several meetings to see if there were additional alternatives that the developer might be interested in.
Very good, thank you, Linda.
It's a wait and see thing.
Yeah, I don't know what they are.
The next application is at 3264 Holland Road in the Rose Hall District. It is for a conditional use permit for a car wash facility and automobile service station, uh, which is for fuel sales, uh, not necessarily auto repair. Staff recommended approval and the planning commission on a nine to one vote recommended Access to this proposed car wash and fueling station is proposed from Warwick Drive, which has direct access to the signalized intersection with Holland Road. The plan also depicts increased landscaping that was recommended by the planning commission, which is an, uh, a altered condition that was, uh, requested by the commission on the eastern side of the property adjacent to Old Clubhouse Road, uh, which is an access to a portion of the community. Also proposed includes a pedestrian trail system with connections to both rights of way and around the stormwater management pond that is proposed. During the hearing, again, the commission, uh, altered two conditions. One was to add additional buffer on the eastern side of the property as well as reducing the operating hours from 9:00 PM to closing at 9:00 PM to 8:00 PM, which is part of their The applicant has done, has done public outreach, which included meeting with both commercial and property owners of the, uh, of the residences in the near vicinity. They did also do door-to-door visits and an in-person and virtual meeting, as well as phone calls with those that were identified as civic leaders in the nearby neighborhood. Again, staff received seven letters of opposition and one letter of support. And then we also received, uh, a petition of support that included 60 signatures, uh, that was provided by a member of the community. During the public hearing, one speaker spoke in opposition while there were two speakers that spoke in support. And the opposition noted concerns related to increase, increased traffic and potential crime, as well as, uh, uh, potential, uh, children's safety due to the conflicts with Item number four is by Earth, Earthscapes Enterprises LLC at 619 and 623 London Bridge Road for a conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard, which is an associated with a landscape office, landscape contractor office. Uh, staff recommended approval and the planning commission on their consent agenda recommended approval. Again, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard, uh, to go in conjunction with their, uh, proposed office development, which is permitted by right in the industrials, in the business commercial district that it's located in. The property is located in the greater than 75 noise zone and in the APZ2, which severely limits the uses that are permitted on the property. The existing property is, is zoned separately, so the residual parcel A is zone industrial, while the two proposed parcels, A2 and A3 are zone, uh, B2 at this time. Uh, the applicant doesn't tend to subdivide these properties with the proposed bulk storage yard, as well as the landscaping contractor office located on the parcel, uh, closest to London Bridge Road, which is parcel A3.
Yes.
What goes in bulk storage? I mean, that's, in my mind, it triggers junk. So what, what's, what kind of bulk?
So they have a landscape contracting business, so this includes mulch and their equipment as well.
Make sure we don't have Sanford and Son over here.
Yes, ma'am, understood. Part of the requirements for the bulk storage yard is that is required to have a category six landscape buffer, which includes fencing and landscaping on the exterior of the fence. And there is a condition that is proposed, uh, which does not allow them to store anything higher than their existing fence, or the proposed fence that would be required to be installed. The proposed office building shown here is only just for graphical purposes. Again, that is a by right development and not conditioned as part of this development. And again, these uses are compatible with the Navy restrictive easement that is on the property. And they did receive a letter of compliance from the Navy liaison. There was one letter of opposition that was received noting concerns regarding the use and the potential, uh, conflict with the appearance of the existing industrial park. But again, this was on the consent agenda for the planning commission. Item number five is by Prince's And Country Club and Expansion 1 LLC at 3800 Pacific Avenue, 2728 Atlantic Avenue and 105 and 3901 Holly Road. This is a, a change or an expansion of a non-conforming use, which is the existing country club, uh, on this property, on these multiple properties.
Bobby, just for the record, if I may.
Yes.
I don't believe this is in District 5.
Yes, sir, I apologize.
It's in the Beach District.
That's what happens when Carolyn retires.
District 5?
No, it's in, it's in the Beach District and it's in District 6, so I apologize. I was looking at the words and I missed the top part of that, so I apologize on my review. Uh, this expansion of a non-conformity was on the consent agenda for the planning commission as well, and staff does recommend approval. The country club is proposing to incorporate a, uh, an existing residence on the property to provide, uh, for short-term stays for their members. The existing residence was built in 1940, uh, and again, they're proposing to provide overnight accommodations for their country club and their guests. Uh, the country club previously did provide overnight accommodations, uh, in the main original clubhouse building that was reconstructed in the, in 2000. Staff believes that this proposed residence will provide a buffer to the existing, uh, bulk storage yard, which is the parking lot, which also, which you see on the, uh, right-hand photo, uh, which also stores the golf carts for the country club and the golf course. Uh, they believe that the incorporating the existing, existing home into the country club will allow for a buffer to the existing residential homes. And staff did receive three letters of support for this request. Item number six, and the final item on the December 6th agenda, is for a tattoo parlor at 1920 Centerville Turnpike, which is in the Woods Corner Shopping Center. And this was on the planning commission's consent agenda for review. The applicant is proposing to operate a tattoo parlor located within the existing shopping center in a vacant space. There is no known opposition to this request. Moving on to our December 13th agenda, uh, there are technically 30 items from planning on this agenda. However, um, four of those, uh, the majority of them are short-term rentals, which are on four separate properties. So there are multiple units on these properties. So although it is technically 30, it is a consolidated agenda for this. Item number one is by ORP Ventures LLC at 82024th Street for a subdivision variance, uh, to allow for the subdivision of this property into two lots, which is currently one lot. Staff did recommend denial of this request, but the planning commission recommended eight to zero for approval of this request. The subdivision variance request is to subdivide the 10,000 square foot parcel into two lots, which are substandard in lot width. The proposed lots are each 40 foot in width, where the minimum lot width in this zoning district, which is R5D, is required at 50 feet. The existing parcel is developed with a single-story duplex that has been on the property for a while. The proposal would be to demolish the existing duplex and replace it with two new single-family residences, one on each lot. Hence why the subdivision variance is required. Again, the applicant is requesting to subdivide the property into two lots to build two detached single-family homes rather than build one duplex on the property. There is no proposed increase in the density of, uh, that could be developed on this property. The subdivision variance is necessary due to the, uh, not meeting the minimum lot width of 50 feet for both lots. And the applicant did note that there is a development pattern that already exists on the lot on the properties. And staff does agree that there is a pattern of development consistent with this type of development of smaller lots, uh, which are predominantly single-family rather than duplex lots in this area. There was a similar request in 2016 that was brought forward to city council, uh, 500 feet further east, which is actually in a different zoning district. That zoning district is actually R5S, which is the zoning district which, which requires if the properties were in common ownership that they could not be separated. So although the, the council did deny similar subdivision variance, uh, in 2016, I do believe that the, the matters of fact on the, on the application are slightly different. Again, staff did recommend denial of this request because they could build the two existing units. However, the planning commission did recommend approval of this request.
Why did you recommend denial?
They, because they could, it's a variance from the subdivision regulations, which required a minimum 50-foot lots. And they were creating a substandard lot, so she did not meet the zoning requirements. Staff does agree that there is a development pattern that is there, which is why I believe the planning commission did recommend approval of the application. Next two items are at Courthouse Marketplace Station and Harris Teeter Properties LLC at 2500 Nemo Parkway, at the Courthouse Marketplace, uh, just down the road from the municipal center. This is two requests for a modification of proffers, as well as a conditional use permit for an antiquated term, again, automobile service station, which is actually just a fueling station at this location. Staff does recommend approval of their request and the planning commission also recommended approval of the request. Harris Teeter plans on redeveloping the site with, uh, which is in a, previously housed the bank on the property with a fuel station, uh, out parcel. The existing landscaping that is on the site will, will be maintained, as well as increasing the landscaping in order for the redevelopment to meet any development criteria that are It is in the historic Overlay District, which requires a, the historical review board to provide a certificate of appropriateness for, appropriateness for approval. And the, the historical review board did grant a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition and the proposed new construction signage on the site. The applicant is proposing to provide outdoor vending or machines, not necessarily vending machines, but refrigerators, uh, that are proposed on the plan. Staff did not recommend those, however, the planning commission does support it, uh, so long as they are screened from the right of way, uh, in a, matching the brick that is similar to what's shown here. Uh, the applicant did note, if I can, uh, for council, you can see the proposed vending machines or the, the refrigerators that hold the merchandise located by the gas pumps. The planning commission did recommend for it to be pushed to the side of the building and screened with a brick enclosure, uh, which is, which will be more consistent with the requirements of screen.
Barbara.
Where in the city do we have that, that I can go look at and see what it looks like and how it works?
That brick screen enclosure, I believe, is at the, uh, there was a location that was brought up in Red Mill, uh, and I'll find that, it's exact address for you, Ms. Emily.
I remember that we've approved one.
That one was approved by council. So I will, I will get the exact location, I will provide that to you.
Fine print.
Brenham Farms has, uh, the existing, uh, at the, the planning commission did recommend it, uh, but the, the staff did recommend against it to provide these, um, refrigerators that are outside. So this is at the Brenham Farms location, but it is not in, uh, historic overlay jurisdiction similar to this one. Uh, staff did receive one letter of opposition. Uh, the writer of the letter, uh, also attended the planning commission public hearing and stated that they have concerns with the application moving forward, believing that they're a party to the application because they own the, or I believe they represent the person that owns the 7-Eleven, uh, which is down the street from it and is subject to proffers that are applicable to this property. However, uh, staff and the city attorney's office does not agree with their, their assertion of that. Item number four, so AT Associates LP at 2717 Virginia Beach Boulevard. And this was recommended by staff for approval and on the consent agenda for the planning commission. This is, uh, a request for modification of conditions for motor vehicle sales, uh, rental and service that was previously approved by city council in 2005. And this is the location commonly known as Beach Ford. The applicant is proposing to rebuild a building on the site, uh, in order to allow for, uh, larger vehicles to be serviced, such as box trucks and ambulances. Here are the proposed elevations of the, of the development. Again, this is tucked into the interior of their property. And it's very difficult actually to see from the right of way minus the rear of the building, which is seen from the road, um, located to the rear of the automobile sales. And now going to our short-term rental portion of the agenda, uh, this is at 303 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 1305. Uh, this is in the Dolphin Run condominium. Staff does recommend approval and this was on the consent agenda for the planning commission. The applicant is proposing a two-bedroom short-term rental and they do meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the proposed short-term rental at the site. Items number six and 11, six through 11, are at 208 10th Street, uh, are by 208 10th Street LLC at 945, 965, 961, 957, 953, and 949 Pacific Avenue. These are proposed short-term rentals, again, in these, uh, townhouse-style, uh, property. And this was on the consent agenda for the planning commission. The proposed short-term rentals do meet the required on-street, or provided, required parking requirements, uh, on-site, and they are currently under construction at this Item number 12 is for a short-term rental at 52922nd Street, which is one townhouse in a row along 22nd Street, which are all, uh, which many of them are utilized as short-term rentals and have approvals for short-term rentals. This again was on the consent agenda for the planning commission. The existing townhouse was built in 2017 and is listed as a five-bedroom, uh, townhouse, which requires five parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to utilize two of the reserved parking spaces that they have for this unit, as well as lease three parking spaces from the 25th Street garage, which is within the normal distance that is, that has been accepted by staff. There is no known opposition to this request. Uh, the last two, well, the last items from 13 to 30 are all for short-term rentals on properties that are adjacent to each other. And these are all on the consent agenda. The first one is 51219th Street. It's a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling, requesting a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. The unique portion of this is that this property, as well as the two other properties, which are at the, are the next items on the agenda, share their parking together. Uh, this is a two-bedroom short-term rental, which does require them to have two parking spaces. You can see the consolidated parking plan here, which also includes three parking spaces located across the street, which are under control of the property owner. Uh, the property owner has control, uh, I believe owns the property across the street And these were on the consent agenda for the planning commission. And the next 16 items are for short-term rentals, uh, located at 516 and 518 19th, 19th Street, which is adjacent to that existing, the previous application. There is one one-bedroom unit and 15 two-bedroom units on this property. And again, this is the proposed parking plan for, for the proposed short-term rentals. This was identified a few, for as a, the pair. This was identified as a Paradise Resort Inn at one point in time down 19th Street. This property at, in the recent years, has been converted to a multifamily use, which then necessitates them to go back to a, to obtain a conditional use permit to provide short-term rentals on this property. And with that, that is the last of the pending planning items.
Okay, great. Bobby, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving right along. You know, hopefully, you know, we shouldn't take too long. Okay, so if it's okay, let's go ahead and punch through with your appointments.
I do have just two little things that I wanted to ask about today. Couple of months ago, we had this presentation by the Boards and Commissions Committee that had looked at our boards and commissions for a year and a half. They got bogged down like everything else in the pandemic. Michael Berlucci and I were the liaisons, and this was a committee that was shared by Jimmy Wood. They did a tremendous job. Walter Camp is here, your vice chair of the committee, and they extensively looked at boards, all of our boards and commissions, not for looking at their mission, but for looking at the way they operate. And they presented us their report with recommendations for how we should go forward, and I think made many good clarifications in how the boards and commissions want to operate and so forth. And we received it, but we never have adopted it. I would ask that we could move forward and perhaps bring this forward at our December 6 meeting.
I also talked to Mr. Berlucci, who served with you, and he's in agreement, and I've already asked the manager to put it on the sixth.
Okay. It's quite extensive, but I think what it will do is have our boards and commissions operate in a fashion so that they're all operating in the same way, and I think it will clarify things for want of peat. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Barbara.
The other issue I just want to ask about, one of our favorite topics, Vanguard Landing, I was asked to clarify, I know when we had an extensive conversation a couple of months ago, or a month or so ago, about there being in a, an area that could be eligible for Virginia Housing loans, and we approved it, but they've about, they're very near, I hope, getting their site plan approval, which means that they would be ready to go forward in getting their loan from Virginia Housing. Virginia Housing does want to clarify that we would be going back to the original approved payment plan that we had adopted when they went forward. And I think we did discuss that, but I don't think it was a topic, I didn't know if we need to bring this back up for clarification, or if we can just say that's, that was the intent. But you know, when, when we approved, and of course, this was, this was a private sale, this is not public property, but the city made a loan to Vanguard Landing, and they were to pay it back with certain payment plan, and it was to go back to that original payment plan. That's agreeable.
Is that a development authority item?
Pardon?
I would think that goes back to the development authority, because they're the ones that are.
Well, that's, that's the.
Handling the loan.
But I think they have to go back to the development authority, because, of course, we conveyed the property to the development authority, which is one of the reasons why I'm not in favor of conveying any more property to the development authority. But I think they stay, made the proposal or assumption that they were calling the loan, and there was some, I know that they made an advanced payment of $500,000, which, of course, they were never, they were never in financial default, and they were to begin payment last February, which they paid the first one. But they had already also paid an additional $500,000, which they are not, they're okay. But going forward, would they go back to their original payment schedule to repay the loan?
I don't know the answer to that question. I was operating under the perhaps mistaken assumption that the VBDA debt was being taken out by the new financing. So I would have to go back and check with, with Mr. Alex Stiles to see what exactly their resolution said. That had been my, that had been my understanding, that the VBDA loan was being taken out. Am I right about that, Dana?
I didn't hear it.
Dana to the rescue.
Sorry. So I didn't hear exactly everything Mark said, but when the city gave the money to the VBDA, the VBDA then loaned the money to Vanguard Landing, subject to a note, the note had modifications in lieu of foreclosure. And so that's, I believe, what you're asking the VBDA to revisit at the request of Virginia Housing. Excuse me.
They have met all of the, because I think the thing that was the holdup was that they had not constructed one house within five years, which they couldn't do because of all the changes and so forth. But as far as repaying the funds, if they have met now all of the requirements of the forbearance, would they be going back to the original payment plan? And Virginia Housing would need to know this in order to close the loan.
So the VBDA would have to change the current forbearance because they still haven't built anything? So they're in technical default to the original note because they haven't commenced construction? And so it would be?
They can't do until, I mean, it's an impossible thing, and I think the council, when they, when we approved that as the condition or the reason, I think it was something that was not possible to do. It really should have come back to us, but it never did.
So, so yeah, but the VBDA can change their forbearance. There was a prepayment of half a million dollars that was over and above the loan payments that were in the note, kind of a good faith effort between the two parties. And so they would then take that into account, do a new schedule, and then keep the forbearance going until they can meet the conditions such as commencing construction.
Well, so these people are not going to be able to get their loan from Virginia Housing.
I think the development authority would be free to consider that at any time. If they needed to do a special meeting, we can arrange that to happen.
Where's their potential closing, their proposed closing?
Pardon?
What, Dick?
I don't think they have, well, they, in order to get to a closing, they, of course, have to get their final site plan approval, which they're expecting to get shortly. And then to get the closing, I mean, it's a, Virginia Housing is not going to close with them until they know what they're going to be able to do with the property. So it's sort of an impossible situation, one to meet without the other.
Well, I think what Dana's saying is the VBDA can certainly take that up and grant the relief that's requested, but they do have to act.
They do have, when do they meet again?
Third Tuesday.
The third Tuesday? Well, then I would like to ask the city council, I would like to have a resolution that we would send to the VBDA, that the city council would like to have our original agreement honored, so that the VBDA knows what the city council wants because they never asked us. So I would ask for that resolution.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, anyone else? Lenwood.
I'd like to expand just a little bit on my earlier interaction with Mr. Kellum. I've served on this body for over a year and worked with a lot of people around this table, both on the council and administration, and I can tell you, everyone's integrity is above reproach. Our city manager always tells me, nothing immoral, illegal, or unethical, it's ingrained in my mind, and you mean it, and so does this body. But I've got thousands of citizens right now in District 6 who've been told otherwise in a series of mailers, that we do shady back-room deals, that we have money stashed away for preferred developers, that we have cronyism in our city, and for me to let it stand and not say anything is something that I cannot do. I think it's a bad reflection on our city, and I think it needs to be repulsed and condemned at every opportunity so that it never happens again. Personally, I came home yesterday and my wife was not herself, and it took a while for me to get out of her that the girls that she plays tennis with thought that her husband was a shady politician due to these mailers. I can't tell you the personal pain that this has caused me, and I don't know what to do about it, but I think we, as a body, need to stand up. Does anybody believe that we do shady back-room deals in this room? Does anybody believe that we have a pot of money for preferred developers? Does anybody believe that we appoint people to positions to enrich ourselves? Answer is no. And I'd like to see us stand up and condemn this because otherwise, the only answer I've gotten from that campaign is, well, this is how you win elections. And if this is going to be the standard for how you win elections in Virginia Beach, then God help us, is all I have to say, because no one decent is going to want to run for office. So I apologize for springing that on you earlier. Mr. Kellum was a campaign consultant to this campaign. He knows our government better than anybody. I'll take him at his word that he knew nothing about it, but he certainly couldn't defend those charges, and neither can anyone else. And I think we, as a body, when anybody does that in the future, need to stand up defiantly and say, prove it or take it back, because it's not true. The integrity of this city is not a political football. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I wrote an opinion piece that went into the Virginian Pilot. And, you know, campaigns locally, nationally, you know, are just, you know, really unacceptable. You know, barrages and barrages of TV and everything, not about what people can do, it's about trashing the other folks. And, you know, the thing is, I've been on this council, you know, since 2004, and I'll tell you, we are a body of integrity. You know, we're a representative body of this city. We have been through a lot together. We are, we have the reputation of being an inclusive city, the safest city, the best-managed city, you know? We do have accolades we should be proud of. And, you know, the point is, though, you know, I think we have, you know, in many ways, Lenwood, you know, defined ourself, you know, we're open. And, you know, once again, there's always people that are going to sit back and judge for whatever reasons. A lot of them are, you know, quite frankly, self-serving, okay?
Mayor's, how do the thousands of citizens in District 6 find out the truth instead of what they've been told? Because right now, we have people in our city that think we operate illegally, morally, and that, I think that's a disgrace.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else at this point? All righty. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 3711A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Discussions, considerations, or interview with prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, and employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A1. Council appointees, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Senator Reggie, after Senator Ranch.
Yeah.
Senator Haley.
Aye.
Senator Holtham. You must have stepped up. Senator Miles.
Aye.
Support pointless, the council.
Senator Miles has left. Senator, absent, Senator Tyler.
Aye.
Senator Wood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, Rose Mary.
Give me just a second, we need to close session and have everybody.
Unless ready to get into that.
That's up to council. That's not a decision.
I'm sorry.
Legally, they can stay if council chooses for them to stay. And then I swear it. Legally, they can stay if council chooses for them to stay.